You know, take, consider the TDM as an alternative measure to the original, just by the EIR.
Thank you, Russ. Any other comments? Please.
My name is David McAdoo, I'm in adjutant operations and construction for Menlo School. And I just wanted to briefly sort of reiterate what Mr. Wallenberg and Ms. Howlett said, that the real, the real magic here is to not just handle a large volume of cars more efficiently, but to actually take cars off the street. And a traffic management program will do that. We, we had one at Menlo School that we've been doing about three years. And it has been very successful in actually just reducing the number of vehicles that are on the street, particularly at those peak hours of drop-off and pickup in the afternoon. The other thing that I wanted to make sure that you knew is that Sacred Heart Schools and Menlo School have been talking about how we can co-mingle our programs so that, well, maybe it's not co-mingle, but how we can have kind of a mutual assistance. There may be things like their faculty and our faculty live in the same places, tend to live in the same places as live in San Francisco. And maybe there's an opportunity for us to have a shuttle bus that brings those people in so it gives more people opportunity to, to carpool, to van-oo, to alternative transportation. And I think we really need the opportunity to sit down, and I know there's the interest in both schools, in sitting down and just seeing where our two programs can, can complement each other and reinforce each other. So, just from our experience at Menlo School, we know it works. We know it, it has tangible, real results. They're very fast. And they get better every year. And we would expect, we'd see the same thing from Sacred Heart's plan. And also, just to reiterate, I think there's a lot that we can do going forward to, to have those two, our two programs work together. And, and the whole will be greater than the sum of the parts.
Thank you, David. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, bring you back to council. Councilmember Bobby.
No, I don't have anything, I have no comments.
Councilmember Poglia.
I will say that in reviewing everything here and actually spending a share of time with schools as of late, I was very pleased to see a very detailed plan and a very deep concern by the school's part to mitigate traffic concerns and coming, coming up with alternatives versus expansion of roadways, tearing down heritage trees. And I was also very pleased to see that we have a monitoring device set up in agreement with the school. And frankly, a period of time to where we can work together instead of going at each other's throats to try to explain why traffic increases. So, I was very pleased to see that as well. So, at this point, I will call the motion.
Where's the motion?
There, let's make the motion then. I move that the city council make the findings outlined in the staff report and take the following actions to approve the following permits with the conditions listed in the draft approval certificate. I, item number...
You have, you have to start with number one because it has to come first.
Item number one. Consider the, a motion to consider the addendum with the final EIR prior to making the decision on the project.
Motion will be to approve it.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
So moved, I mean, second, all in favor? Apologize.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to number two. Make, a motion to make the finding based on substantial evidence that the alternative A intersection improvements are no longer necessary to mitigate the significant impact and a better alternative exists in the form of an enhanced TDM program.
Do I add three to that?
Can I add three to that? Thank you. Do I need to read three?
Nope.
And I add three to that as well.
Providing the two COPs.
Two COPs, please, thank you. Motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. So, thank you very much for your attendance and thank you very much, staff.
Mr. Mayor, I would like just to make one comment. I've been on the planning commission as well as a council member. And I've also found that Sacred Heart has done a very good job in trying to accommodate, you know, everybody, including the neighbors and the concerns of the council. So, I would just congratulate you on this.
Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment too.
Okay.
I just want to emphasize that I think it's the right thing for Atherton that a school is able to reduce 1,000, almost 1,900 round trips with 1,055 students down to 6,000 round trips, increasing the student population by 10, by, by, up to 1,160. I think that's very significant. And we have lots of traffic problems around schools in this town. And that's a really important thing. So, I, I feel honored to be able to support this and, and to have other schools in addition to Sacred Heart looking to implement this kind of a program.
Thank you again. So, I welcome back my fellow council members. I look forward...
No problems.
So, we're going to be moving on to regular adjutant. Items number 16 through 19. Moving to number 16, committee appointments and possible interviews. City Mayor Robert.
Thank Mayor Reese and members of the council. You have two committees for which you're considering appointment this evening. One is the environmental programs committee for which you have two applicants. You have Frank Merrill and, and both of which may be appointed by one motion of the council. We have enough vacancies on that committee. And you also have consideration of appointment for the San Mateo County Vector Mosquito and Control District. You have Sam Lerner who is asking for reappointment and two other applicants, a man named Mason Bruski. Bruski. And Sandy Crittenen. One or both or all of those applicants may be present here this evening. If you see them in the audience, you're certainly welcome to Q and A. It'd be appropriate to take motions on both committees separately.
Thank you. Would council members like to ask questions of the members that are here related to the environmental committee? Are we okay with that?
I'm good with that.
I move that we accept the candidates.
Right after we have public input.
At this point, we'll open it up to any public comments related to the two individuals, Frank Merrill and Wu Wen, related to the environmental committee.
Is anyone here? Are they here?
No, Frank's not.
It was a slam dunk.
So, this is a slam. Wow. What are the odds? Thank you. We'll bring you back to council.
Okay, I'd like to move that we accept both nominees for the environmental programs.
Councilman Whitner moves to...
I'll second.
Second. Councilman Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing none. Moving to second. Thank you. So, we're going to be moving on to the vector control district. Do we have anybody here from the vector control district, i.e. Sandy Crittenen, Mason and Sam Lerner? Sam Lerner, present.
I'm here. Mason Bruski's here.
Thank you for pronouncing your name for us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and Sandy Crittenen called me and told me it was his son's birthday and he was, he was already committed to taking out for him.
In pri, in, I understand priorities. Would council members like to ask either member any questions? I will bring up them as you, if you're interested in questions. Questions by council? Yes, no?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, of course, we've, we've seen Sam a number of times, but Mr. Bruski?
Yes. Mason? Can you come up to the microphone, please? Yes. Thank you.
So, in your application, you talk about, I guess, that you were on the, the grand jury that did the study that, of course, we looked at. And you've got a CPA background and obviously some of the issues that we've all run about have been finance-related. But there are, in addition to, to some of the procedural changes and administrative changes that need to be made and that are being made at the mosquito abatement group, what other key goals do you have for yourself and for the, for the organization as we move into the next, this upcoming term, should you be appointed?
Thank you. I'll go through, I'm going to give you a little background, then I will answer those questions. I was appointed the grand jury for the 2012, 2013 year. Excuse me. And we spent nine months investigating the San Mateo County mosquito infector district. And this was at the request of a city in San Mateo County. This was not the grand jury's decision. They were asked to do this by a city in this county, okay? Basically, we spent nine months, we interviewed 15 people, some of them with subpoenas. Some people, current members of management, past members of management, current board members, past members of board. A wide variety of people were interviewed and documents were asked for, subpoenaed to get. So, we had a, a very good understanding after nine months of what were the issues and the problems of the mosquito district. Out of that came the grand jury report that came out last July. That report was extensive, accurate, and I think gave a very clear picture of what was going on at the mosquito district. After that report, I felt fairly strongly about that report that we'd done a lot of work and had a lot of positive ideas in there. And some of them are not in that report because of certain issues I can't discuss. But a number of them, I'm, I'm willing to talk about here today. Number one, there's a board of directors of 21 people. Every city in San Mateo County has a voice at the table along with the member of the county board supervisors, I think. This budget is a $6 million budget in the mosquito district. So, we have a 21-member board on top of a $6 million budget. I think that's a problem. Difficult to run an organization with 21 people. I think there are potentially ways to change that. I'm not going to make, I'm not going to make any statements that I can do it. But I think it's certainly through LAFCO or the county, county, county offices, potentially that can be looked at. The grand jury felt it was very, very tough to govern the 21 people on a board of directors. And I think you would all, all agree to that. It's not, not easy to do that. You have five here. Another issue is there's a reserve fund of $5 million the mosquito district has. We never got a clear answer as to why we need $5 million. Seems like a lot of money for a budget with $6 million, $6 million a year. Now, they did need it this last year because we had, we, the taxpayers suffered a fraud, as you probably are all aware of, that was around $600,000 to $800,000 walked out the door. But that was only the start of it because then numerous attorneys were hired. We had outside CPA firms, forensic audit, $250,000. It was well over a million dollars was spent on this. So, this was approaching 18% of the budget had to be spent to take care of this problem or out of reserves. I'm not sure exactly. But this was a big problem. You know, there was a lot of press this last year about the mosquito district. And so, those are, those are the other issues. And I find this that the two people accountable on the mosquito district fraud were prosecuted by the district attorney. He's done a great job and we're all, we're almost finished with that. Quite, we all know the press on that. But what's concerned me is that top management was not held accountable for this. This is a substantial amount of money that disappeared. No top management people disappeared were held accountable for this. And I'm not sure on the board, I'm not, I'm not privy to that. It just seems to me we need some changes here at the district. And I've got the time, the energy, the background to do this. I, I would make a pledge to you that I would only do this for, for one term. I think that we need to have change of people on these district boards, they change over, new blood, new ideas. And I think after four years, I think that I'd be willing to step down, have someone else step in here. Because I think boards need change, you need new blood, new ideas. And that's why, I have nothing against Dr. Lerner, he's been here six years, but he will take another four years than he did for 10 years. And I just think that we need to have new blood, some new ideas on this.
Do you have any questions? Any other questions? Thank you. Any questions for Sam? Sam?
Well, Sam, it might be appropriate for you to, to just make a comment. I don't mean to take over for, for the mayor, but we have quite a long speech and so...
I have been, this is my sixth year as a trustee. And I just want you to know that I became president after the embezzlement. The board voted for me to take over and lead them out of the abyss, you might say. And I want to answer a few of the things that Mr. Bruski brought up, or draw some light on them. First of all, the 21-member board, this is due to the state. There's a statute. It can't be changed at the local level. Every mosquito district, and there's over 50 in the state, has to be represented by every incorporated city and the county at large. Orange County and LA Metro have 35 trustees. And some are smaller and some are larger. At first, it was rather difficult to, when I became president, to keep the board under control and follow some modified Roberts rules. But if any of you have been to our meetings, they go very smoothly. There is an advantage to a larger board. You don't form, it, it's not easy to form a political clique, which is a problem with some city councils where you get three people voting as a block and that's the way it goes. I don't think it's true here. Also, we have a, a wealth of diversity on our board, all sorts of people. And it really, we fill five standing committees and many ad hoc committees and it works very, very well. There's great representation concerning our reserves. Our budget is a little in excess of a little over $4 million and we do have about $5 million in reserves. And those reserves, if you look at our financial statements, are earmarked. There's a certain reserve for emergency, like an earthquake or a, some kind of a disease, a disaster, where we have to spend a lot of money. Right now, we know about this Aedes aegypti, the yellow fever mosquito, which through wonderful surveillance by our laboratory and operations department, we were able to nip in the bud. Although, it has entered Atherton now. And we'll be watching it very carefully this winter and more so when the warmer weather comes in the spring. If there's ever an outbreak of that, it's going to take a lot of money. We have a reserve for replacing our facility in case of some kind of a disaster. And the same thing with our vehicles. And then we have to have a reserve for OPEP. We've been going on a pay-as-you-go plan, but we're going to have to put up a million-plus dollars for our OPEP, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, when you have a budget of $4 million plus, really, a $5 million reserve when you consider all the categories is not really in excess. As far as the, the fraud, yes, our, our, our board of trustees and our staff and our citizens are, were certainly victims of this fraud. There were only two people in the finance department. And when I was in conference with John Byers, who's our county council, he said, "When you have the only two people in a, in a department conspiring, it raises the crime to a higher level." Very, it was, they're, I mean, we all felt very, very badly about it. And believe me, the, the years after the fraud was detected while I was president and for the trustees was very, very difficult time. We went through a sphere of influence and service review by LAFCO. The executive director of LAFCO called for our dissolution. We had to defend ourselves and we did win out on that on a six-to-one vote. And then, of course, we had the civil grand jury investigation. But fortunately, the result of the civil grand jury investigation, all 21 of the incorporated cities and the county responded, including the town of Atherton. And the vast majority of the cities responded favorably toward us and favorably toward their trustee. As far as needing new blood with the trustees, in the, I came, I was appointed by the town council in May of 2008. And since then, more than half of the trustees have turned over. So, there's a natural attrition. And we have a CPA now representing the county, who's the finance director of the ACT Theater with a $20 million budget. We have a couple of nurses. We have Rick Wykoff, who was the city manager of Foster City for 17 years, 10 years on the city council, chair of our finance committee, doing a great job, et cetera. We've got all kinds of talented people. And I, I think that the civil grand jury report really reported on the period of time from the onset of the, of the embezzlement to the end of the embezzlement. In that period of time, from the time, from the time the embezzlement was discovered, we have instituted internal controls that are now a model for all the other independent districts in the state. They, I mean, we've gone overboard. Financial reforms, we have new people in the finance department, of course, new lab director, a new assistant manager who runs operations. So, a lot of things have happened. And I think the district is in very, very good condition right now. And I have, I was, I was elected vice president for two years, then president, and I've worked very, very hard to bring this about along with all the other trustees. So, I, I just want to, oh, the other thing is, as far as the money, yes, there, these people, they're, the one embezzler is, has been incarcerated early on, she couldn't make bail. The other one was on bail. And now, I read, maybe you did, that the judge of, removed her. We wouldn't let her stay on bail. She is now in jail. And later in January, she's going to find, we'll find out what her sentence is. And we did receive $200,000 from her in restitution with a promise of another $50,000. And we are still working with the insurance, we are insured, but we are having some difficulty with the insurance company. And I think in the end, we will collect the remainder of the money to return to the taxpayers. So, sorry I took so long, but I, I just wanted to give you a little more insight into what's going on.
No, thank you for that. And I, I want to bring it back to the council members. Any other questions potentially for Sam?
Yeah, I have a question. Sam?
Yeah.
In the, I, I have not read the grand jury report, but in the grand jury recommendations, were there things that the board chose not to implement that were recommended?
I want to back up one step. When we had the service review by LAFCO, it was very intensive. And we abided by every recommendation LAFCO made and even surpassed that. And that's a matter of record. As far as the grand jury report, we felt that everything in there, virtually, I don't have it in front of me either, virtually everything in there, we had already. It, it wasn't taken into consideration the period of time after the embezzlement and we had, we had instituted all those, all those things. Now, your official response from the town of Atherton, which was on September 4th as, during a special council meeting, gave pretty good support to the district and also to myself as a trustee.
Sam, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
And it's going to pertain on accountability. So, I'm going to focus on, obviously, the gal with the head of her department. She hired somebody to work for her. Who hired her?
Who hired the gal that was, let's call her the lead embezzler? Yes.
Joanne, was your name?
Okay.
Thank you.
The hiring at that time was being done by staff. And so, the, the staff hired, you know, I don't know who the exact people were. I'm sure the manager was part of it. The staff hired her.
So, staff in general. Basically, what I'm trying to, to come out and, and find out, was there a recommendation from the grand jury to do any corrective measures above her? Meaning, was there a singular person? Now, you mentioned the word staff. Was it, so, staff is a single person or?
No, I mean, I don't know, there, there probably was a committee. I, I mean, we could find out. I'm sure it's, that's a matter of record. Well, who, who was on that committee that hired her? But I want to tell you this, since I've been president, we hired a, an assistant manager who was taking over operations. And I, I, the president gets to nominate or to appoint all the committee members and the committee heads. And I, I had an ad hoc committee made up of staff, an outside consultant from another district, and trustees to hire not only the assistant manager, but the, well, the finance director was hired before I got to do that. And we also had the new, the lab director. It was done that way.
So, let me narrow it down a little bit.
Yeah.
In my reading related to the district, I read that the gentleman that hired her failed to do a background check or check references. Did you guys get a recommendation to do anything with that person?
The one that was certainly whose feet were held to the fire about not doing a criminal background check was the manager. The board in closed session, because he is our only employee.
Sure.
And the board decided to retain the manager.
Hang, hang on a second. You can't divulge what took place in closed session.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but the manager was retained.
That decision was made in open session too?
Yes, both.
Both, thank you.
But the manager was retained, sorry.
No, thanks.
That's why we have council.
Thank you.
The manager was retained and he underwent a performance improvement plan for six months. And the feeling was that, yeah, oh, by the way, policy, we've changed a lot of our policies. It was, unfortunately, it was not even in the policy to do a criminal background check, but I don't think that was any excuse.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question?
Yes, please.
Sam? I've, I've not been to your, to your meetings, I apologize. But as, as you know, here in Hartpak's, we have all the checks and we have, and we go through the treasures report and things like that. Does your board do that?
Oh, yes. Our board, since we've, we've always had a finance report every month. But since we've, since the fraud and since we've had the new finance director, it's extremely detailed. Every single check that is written, every single charge on a visa, we've reviewed, we've done so many things. There, there used to be a lot of visa cards, now there's only one. And the other two are locked in the safe. So, yes, we, we have an extensive financial report.
So, so before, before the embezzlement, you know, during the, I guess it was two years that Joanne was, was writing checks to herself and things like that, that I've read and it was in the grand jury report, did you all... read, and it was in the grand jury report, did you all have those reports, and did you look at them as, as course of part of your...
Yes.
Your board meetings, and how, was there, I guess, one of the things that is no issue, was, it's not a critique on yourself, just that we try and understand, but it seemed like there was maybe, the process maybe wasn't followed or something like that, maybe, and I know that you fixed a lot of these things.
We fixed them all and more, however, to answer that, when, whether it's a town council or a board of trustees, here sits the finance director at the meetings, along with, you know, the manager and others, and we are given, yeah, she gave us financial reports, but we didn't see the visa accounts that were hidden, we didn't see that she was paying herself extra money, it was all hidden from us very skillfully. Everything looked good on paper.
No, thank you, Sam, thanks for that.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak.
No, thank you. I'm sorry, Sam.
Sam, one final question, sorry. You mentioned the LAFCO report and that you had implemented all of the recommendations and gone beyond that, was that assessment that LAFCO did, was that subsequent to the grand jury report?
No, the LAFCO report came out on June 12th, 2012, and the grand jury report came out, I believe, in June or July of 2013, so we had already abided, we did everything LAFCO wanted and more, and so, that's all detailed and, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, thank you.
City clerk, could you hand out the...
Is there anybody else in the public?
Is there appropriate panel?
Any other public comments?
Yeah, we'd like to make some comments.
Apologize.
All right. Ruth A. Wade. Dennis Prager, thirty years resident, early game, fifteen years member of the mosquito abatement district, fourteen of those years chairman of the finance committee, eight of those years executive committee member. I don't know where to start. Sam, Mr. Bruski, you can do much better job on the grand jury than I can. As I recall, the first recommendation from the grand jury was that the manager was incompetent for many reasons, including the lack of checking the previous two employers of Joanne, who she also embezzled significant dollars from, so her track record was three times this charmed. Did not make one phone call to the previous employer or any other employer. Does not take a criminal investigation, takes a refund. Second recommendation, I recall, was that the twenty-one-member board, which can be managed, because I was on it for fifteen years, was also incompetent, didn't understand what their jobs were, had no concept of fiduciary governance was, and was lost when it came to the idea of oversight, or the only employee, the general manager, who was found to be incompetent because of his inability to supervise one person handling the finances. It wasn't a diabolical, colossal auditing problem to discover that credit cards were used for ten, fifteen thousand dollars to pay previous legal fees from Joanne's previous embezzlement. It didn't take a genius to figure out many things, that the previous auditor was called back into on the forensic audit to audit his previous mistakes. I go to Mr. Bruski, if that is your last name. All I've been looking for since the four years that I haven't been on the, on the district is accountability. I come from the private sector and I dabble in the public sector occasionally, just to see the dang dang of life, but I submit to you, if any one of my managers had behaved anywhere near the way Mr. Robert Gay behaved, and the president and the executive committee of the board chose to slap him on the wrist with a six-month probation, I would be looking for changes for Atherton's representation for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name is James Kounds. I'm the former operations director, I was with the district for forty years. I was basically the whistleblower that started this whole thing happening. I saw the discrepancies with the finances, especially in my categories, were over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that she was trying to take money out of those categories, but as I researched it and realized there was no carryover in any of these categories, I brought it to the manager's attention, he basically said, "No, there's no problem, it's carryover," and, and so, I implemented, went to the DA, went to grand jury, went to different agencies to try to get help to look into this procedure. The other thing is, it's not only the finances was wrong with this district, it's a lot of what's happening with this district, was, there was a good old boys' club, basically, of people that were in the executive committee and, and there were the finance directors that basically would do whatever the manager wanted, they had eight people looking at these, and nobody saw any of those things, and we're talking, she was buying our groceries, she paid our IRS bills, I have all the documentation, I will show that to everyone to see it, I got it because I had to go through the forensic audit, because they didn't know what they were looking for. So, myself and Dr. Peavy, who was the other director at the time, who's now the manager of Alameda Vector Control, basically, we summoned, showed them the information, and they tried to cover it up because of the embarrassment. The manager was basically checked out for over two years. Also, what Sam forgot to mention was, he was, I went to him personally, called him on the phone, and he said, "If you have a problem, call the police." So, that's exactly how come this thing has gone on for as long as it has. I've been doing everything I could possibly do to try to bring some type of clarity to the public, and, and they need to be held accountable for what has happened here, it's gone on for so many years. But the other thing, he was the vice president at the time, and there's been a lot of the other ones that, that were in the same committee that are now, some of the other cities have taken them down. So, I'm hoping, please, we need a change at that district. The culture needs to be changed, the other problem is, the reputation of the district has been tarnished. I worked myself for forty years to give a good report with all these different agencies and with the public, and now, we have a tarnished reputation because we've lost our integrity and the honesty, and I think we need changes, please make some changes. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
You know, listening to this, I just wonder if there's, if it's, if it's Atherton's responsibility for the member on the, on the board to...